Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you. Let's take a quick roll call. Mr. Collins? Keep going. Ms. Panato?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Aiken?
Here.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I am here, Madam Chair.
All right. Floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes, rediscussions at 11:00 from 11:30 a.m. First case is BOA 1183277 with the address of 68 Rose Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of the applicant Business Office to Centrals Road and Braintree. With me this afternoon is James Christopher, who is the project architect. So this is 68 Rose Street in Rosendale. The zoning in this neighborhood is two-family 5,000. This lot is 9,017 square feet. The proposal is to construct a four-story residential building upon a currently vacant lot. This proposal would be comprised of four units. It would include six parking spaces in the rear. The importance of this is the front part of this lot is very flat. And then as you get further into the lot, it really goes down significantly. So the building itself presents to the street as a three-story building. The project recently appeared before the board on December 6, 2022. At that time, we had front yard parking. The neighbors were very concerned about having adequate parking in this neighborhood. So we had front yard parking because of the elevation change. We had filed revised plans based upon that. They liked the project, but they said they wanted to do something with the front yard parking. We were able to find space when you're looking at the building to the right to have the parking, six parking spaces located in the rear. The violation, excuse me, there would be four units and they're all three-bed units. 1711 square feet, 1776, 1927, and 1864. As far as violations, we have an FAR violation. A .5 is allowed in the two-family district. We're at .91. Stories is two and a half. We're at four, but that counts the below grade as it tapers off the hill. Minimum side adder is 10 feet. We have a 12-foot 9.7 on the right, which is where another abutter lives. And on the left, it abuts land which is owned by the BPDA. We're five feet from that. Open space, we're at 1750 per unit. We are at 814 square feet. In use because we're doing more than two units in the 2F 5,000. We are cited for multi- MFR, multi-family residential is forbidden. As I stated, this went through a long process. We tried to work with the abutters with respect to parking. Initially, when the proponent first met with the abutters early on, his proposal, because it's a 2F 5,000 and he has over 9,000 square feet, he wanted to do two separate buildings with three units in each building. They thought it would be better if they merged into one because it would be less curb cuts, less pavement, you know, less taking up of open space and things like that. So he came up with this plan and did get reduced from a six to a four. And again, the last time, the four, the parking spaces of six were moved to the back because obviously front yard parking is a violation and that has since been removed. I'm here to answer any questions. And James Christopher is with me as well, and he can walk through any designs if anyone has any questions. Thank you for your help.
Mr. Pugini, have there been any changes to the project number, unit count, or anything else?
Well, the unit count, yes. So initially, Chair, it was six units. And that was reduced down to four units. And as I stated, you know, this is a 2F zone, but it's 2F 5,000. We have a three-family condominium, a three-unit condominium directly to our right when you're looking at the project. So we feel like it's consistent. It's a vacant lot. There'll be no displacement. You know, it's a place that needs housing. You can walk from there easily to High Park Avenue to get bus- to get the bus to Forest Hills and beyond, as well as, you know, walking to the Village in Rosendale Square, you know, for nightlife and also for commuter rail and busing to Forest Hills coming down Washington Street.
And so just to confirm, when you had initially brought this to the board last year, it was a six and you've since downsized it to a four?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. That's helpful to know in the context of, there are no current opposition letters that I see, but there were plenty previously. So I'm sure Mr. Newman can respond to that shortly. Any other questions from the board?
Given its location to public transit, why do you need six parking spaces?
That's a very good question. Initially, you know, as you guys know, in Rosendale and High Park, it's two parking spaces per residential unit. Initially, we had, the neighbors were very concerned about parking in this neighborhood and guests and where would they park and things like that. So that's why we're at six. I mean, four would make more sense because you're doing four units. It would take up less open space and that would increase our open space, but it was somewhat to please the abutters.
Okay.
Are there any accessible units? Are there any ADA units in the building?
Yes, there will be one ADA building in the building, unit in the building.
Okay. I don't know. I guess I don't understand how that translates to the way the parking spaces are drawn out, whether or not that an ADA space is required and therefore fits with the layout there. So that's a question I have.
So we will have an ADA parking space, Mr. Aiken, as well?
Yeah, we have room on site to accommodate that.
Okay. I agree with the other questions, though, and the comment around why does this require six spaces? And it seems to leave the rear of the lot with less desirable space for residents to use.
You know, I mean, mistaken, you know how this process goes, right? I mean, you go into it and you're in the abutters and they're talking about, you know, overflow parking on their street and things like that. And we did have a lot of parking up front, which obviously, as the board knows, is not the ideal situation. So when we reported, when we presented in December, the board was like, wow, this is a good project now. However, we still have the parking in the front. We want to see that in the back. And we were able to do that. And that's why the last uproar happened.
Right. Thank you.
Are you planning on, you're both painting, paving, and any landscaping opportunity here?
There's a, that's a very good question, Ms. Panato. There's a ton of landscaping opportunity because the building is set back from the street. So we can do that and also buffering along the side where our abutters live. And as I stated, when you're looking at the building to the left, that land is open to, is owned by the BPDA. So at some point, I'm sure something will be an RFP or something will be put out for that. But we will be doing extensive landscape design, landscape buffering, and obviously, the parking is now in the rear.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. My apologies. I don't have a lot of information. Like I said, we've had some personnel changes. I do have, from the count from February 28th, we had seven letters of support of this proposal and 17 signatures in opposition, four letters in opposition. Some abutters had some concerns with parking in proximity to plot lines on the area. We also know that State Rep Rob Consolvo had also expressed some concerns at the time. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newman, are you aware the concerns about parking are what? That there's too little, too much, or?
I think there's always a desire from the community to see more parking with concerns regarding, you know, overflow out onto the street.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Frey is here from Councilor Ricardo Royall's office. Would like to go on record in support of this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Mannion from Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy, at this time, would like to go on record of this project and has also written a strong letter of support for it. Thank you.
Cindy?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Cindy Juvison, Councilor of the City of New York's office. Would like to go on record and support the project.
Councilor Royall's office? Can you hear from them?
I think I just, did you guys hear me?
Okay, sorry.
You heard us, yeah.
Did you hear us go? I'm sorry about that.
No worries. He heard from Bob, right? Bob's hand is still up. Yes, Bob, please. Jill? Oh, okay. Bob, go ahead.
Madam Chair and members of the board, Valdemir D'Antoni, I'd like to request that the number of parking spaces be reduced to four, increase in width, and this will lead to more opportunity to put more green space and add, act as a better abutter, that's a tough one to say, to those that are going to live behind and on the side of this project. And it also improves maneuverability as well. Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands. Thanks. Was this person Jill speaking? I think she's here for another project. She says she's here for 68 Row in the chat.
Hello. Hi. I'm so sorry. It just upgraded me to a panelist, so my Zoom reset for a second. My apologies. Thank you for your understanding. I am the direct abutter to 68 Row. I speak on behalf of all of the neighbors. I do have a prepared statement, but I just, I know that there were some questions about the parking. So I just wasn't sure if you would like me to address what those concerns were before I mention the other piece. I just want to be respectful of everyone's time.
So I wouldn't read off the statement. Oh, go ahead, Madam Chair. Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I wouldn't read off the statement. I wouldn't read off the full statement. If you could just briefly tell us what the court opposition is based on.
No problem. Thank you so much. Again, hello and good afternoon. My name's Jill Fetter-Schneider. My address is 74 Rose Street. I'm the direct abutter to the lot at 68 Row. Again, I speak on behalf of the neighbors and the main points are as follows. The first is really just surrounding the zoning codes and how the zoning really for Rosendale is around it being, you know, more of a community neighborhood. This structure doesn't really align with the other homes in the area. It sets a precedent for other proposals. And it's also not mentioned that this lot directly abuts as well an MBTA corridor. The commuter rail goes directly behind. And so I'm just, you know, concerned about, you know, has the MBTA have any say into this, onto how it, you know, abuts their, you know, their rail. Secondly, the building in this magnitude is really going to encroach upon the privacy of the neighbors and their small children. It's low, it's zoned for a two-family home, as the lawyer did state. But the four duplexes really is actually encroaching quite a bit. In all of the community meetings that have been held since, I believe it's been 2020, the entire neighborhood is vehemently opposed to this. As one of the other members had stated, there have been approximately 20 letters in opposition. Someone had mentioned that there haven't been letters since. The reason being for that is basically, anything above what it's zoned for, the neighborhood is opposed. So that is on the neighbors for not realizing that we had to continue sending letters. So apologies for not realizing that protocol. But there's definitely significant disapproval for an oversized proposal on this lot. There also has been testimony regarding, and I know a letter had been submitted. I don't, I don't have access to that one, regarding the questionable fill on this land. According to the City of Boston's assessing website, the land is listed as unusable. So there is actually questionable fill as to the structure of the land itself and whether it, whether or not it's sound enough to support a structure, especially of this size. Another note that is a bit misleading on the plans is that the side where they mentioned that it abuts the Rosendale Woods, it actually is quite a steep slope. So if you are going to really be encroaching on what the border should be, I think it's actually a structural issue where if you're not going to be doing something to support that slope, what does that mean, you know, for risk of, I don't have all the correct terminology. I apologize. But basically, it's a very steep slope. So if you're going to build a large structure that's encroaching on that land, I would question the safety, especially where there is record of questionable fill.
Okay, can you please, can you please wrap up? Thank you. Can you address her question about a couple of her posts?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. I think most importantly, you know, where she said that, because this project has changed several times. We stated at the beginning of it, right? We started at six units. The parking was up front. Went down to four units. The parking was up front. The parking was moved to the back. Her statement was anything, they didn't have to update their letters because anything above the zoning, the neighbors are opposed. The woman who just spoke lives in a three-family condominium directly adjacent to this project. That is not compliant with zoning. So under her own standard, the, her own property where she's living, it would not exist this day. So, you know, we've done everything we can. We have worked with people. There's no displacement. This is empty land. This is vacant land that's just being unused. The city needs housing. It is a unique-shaped lot. I agree with the board member who suggested the four, and also Mr. D'Amico, who suggested the four parking spaces. However, you know, when you're in the community setting, it's sometimes it's difficult to explain to people, you know, which way the city's going in when they're saying, well, zoning requires two parking spaces per unit. And again, you know, we moved the parking to the rear. If you look at the abutting property to our right, the parking is in front of the aisles. So and through, that was the main points that she touched on, and that is my response to that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
A motion to approve with BPDA design review and a proviso that there is one parking spot per unit instead of a five. There would be four parking spots.
May I have a second?
Sorry, second.
Okay, Mr. Collins. All right. Mr. Collins, we're voting.
Yes, sorry about that. I forgot the dog runs around too.
Okay, Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your day.
Thank you.
Next case is BOA 1404307. The address of 19 to 21 Standards Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The advocate, please.
Yep.
Is the floor mine?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith, Office of Terra Law. I have business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston Back Bay. As indicated by our time slot, this is a reconsideration today, the second time being before the board. We did have an original hearing on February the 7th for which we had kind of run through the physical components of the project, which, as presented again before you today, is not changing in any capacity. At the original ZBA hearing, there was a request and motion to defer, which carried for us to complete a, you know, somewhat imperfect community outreach process to specifically engage with the River Street Civic Association. I know that the mayor's representative will be on the line to speak as to that, but I just wanted to let you know that was the cause of the deferral. We did have our presentation before the River Street Civic Association. We did receive a unanimous vote of approval with one abstention. We do have the support of, as it was kind of a critical component of the River Street's vote of approval. We do have the approval in writing as presented to Stephanie Haynes for our immediate abutter to the left, to the right, and immediately across the street. So I'm happy to kind of go through the project again for you if you'd like. But the critical requirement of the board as of February 7th was to re-engage with River Street Association, which I think we have done completely. And we do have their written letter of support on the record.
Mr. Stenbridge, do you have that letter?
I'm looking for it. Who did the letter come from?
It came from the River Street Civic Association and unfortunately, only as of 11:58 p.m. last night, as forwarded to Stephanie Haynes this morning.
Okay.
Yes, from the River Street Civic Association. And they are, well, they don't say one word. They are on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Any other letters or in support or opposition, Mr. Stenbridge?
There are other letters in support. I don't see yet any letters of ah-ah.
Thank you.
There are some, some letters in opposition also.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Kyle, please proceed.
No problem. So importantly, the letters of support additionally are from immediate abutter to our left, immediate abutter to our right, and across the street. Would you like me to run again through the proposed project?
Briefly, focusing on the violations?
Certainly. This prior board had approved in 2012 the approval of this conversion to a three-family. This proposal is to effectively, the sole exterior envelope changes are to put a set of dormers on the left side of the structure on the roof line as you're looking at it, to effectively add two bedrooms to the existing third-floor living area, attic space, to put a rear deck or decking to the rear of the structure. Those are the only proposed exterior changes. Interior, there's some reconfiguration of living space and specifically, the expansion of the structure for living purposes into the basement level, which would render the first unit a combined duplex first and basement level. Importantly, knowing, you know, the prior board's concern about basement level living, we have one internal means of egress. We have two full external means of egress. The board has elevations before them for review of these items. But we do have some, you know, I think, kind of safe elevations for the sake of, you know, multiple means of egress. Additional window wells in the front right portion of the building, which is a bedroom, also has a full exposure as well. So that is kind of high arching view of the project that the board had previously heard as of February the 7th, which again, is not changing in any way.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Could you adjust ceiling heights in the basement?
Ceiling height, they did have to dig down to provide adequate ceiling height. So the ceiling height is, you know, certainly up to code and I believe is pushing seven and a half feet.
Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held an abutter meeting on November 21st of 2022. The applicant then went on to meet with the River Street Civic Association, which offered their support in the proposal, saying they have great confidence that the applicant will continue to communicate with his neighbors and ensure this project is completed in the time of the matter that best suits everyone affected by it. Our office also received, I believe, looks like three letters in support and one in opposition. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayemi Dale Uwea. I'm the Office of Councilor Brian Worrell. In regards to 19 to 21 Standards Street, having received three letters of support, one of which from the Civic River Street, the council would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to pull forward a motion to approve the project with BPDA design review.
Thank you. Madam Second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
Prior to moving forward on the rest of these cases, jumping ahead to the 1 p.m. here, is there any request for withdrawals or deferrals from that timeframe? Hearing none, we will then move on to case BOA 1348905 with the address being 120 to 124 Babson Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Yes. June and I are running that representing the client. I believe the clients are actually on the call.
Great. Can you walk us through the project?
Yeah, so the project is converting an existing vacant building in Madison Square, which has been vacant for years, not being utilized. And actually, there's a lot of dumping happening on the side. So what my client is proposing is turn it into 14 elderly housing units with support on the ground floor in terms of elderly daycare that will provide services and function for the tenants and also for neighborhood elderly that needs to use it. So right now, we are proposing to keep the building intact and basically do some work on the interior, locating the elderly daycare and programs on the ground floor and using the top three floors to provide, to provide the units along with the security offices, support offices, and other, and other needs for the programs. We intend to do some very intensive landscaping work. Right now, we have not engaged in landscape architect yet, but that's certainly something we will do when we start doing our work with the BPDA if we are approved and also before we go to ISD. Right now, the dark shade you're seeing now basically presents the opportunity for green space. So the only places that will not be green on the side will be the part that you see as white and where you see the parking. Everything else, the way is where you see the dark shades will be landscape spaces that will provide nice, in terms of aesthetics, feel for the neighborhood compared to what is right now, which is basically kind of a dove in your eye. If you move, uh, if you move up on the, on the, on the next slide, which is very similar, uh, the floor plan, next slide, if you have it. Yeah, so, so this is, uh, this is basically just kind of analysis of the, of the, of the occupancy, uh, where, where on the top, on the top floor here, you'll see this is where we'll have the elderly, uh, daycare space, then on then on the, on the other, on the other floors, which is very typical, except for the first floor, where we'll have on the white-hand side spaces for a, uh, for like a security office, a, a manager's office, uh...
Um, sorry, you're muted.
I must have hit something by mistake. Sorry. So I, I think on the next floor plan, on the next slide, you'll, you'll be able to see the floor plan much larger. Uh, this is kind of the demo plan. You can skip that. This is where, this is basically to hold this demo work. Then, uh, to the next one. So this is, this is the typical of, uh, what the unit will look like. There will all be one-bedroom handicap accessible units, uh, that would, uh, that would be, uh, offered to, to elderly that can live independently, but certainly there will be some support on site, on site if they, if they need to. So, so what the client is doing, trying to do is, is, is propose something that is in dire need for the neighborhood, a place where, where you actually have independent living, uh, for, for, for elderly folks and also having that program downstairs that they, they, they can choose to, to attend if they wish. So, so this is basically the, uh, this is, this is basically the unit type. You can see on the left-hand side, unit type A, and the right-hand side, unit type B. There's, I think, about three unit types in the building. So they're all very generous spaces, uh, another, another unit type, very generous with the, with the, uh, uh, with nice bedrooms, kitchen, open floor plan, and the gap access bathroom, large closets. Uh, I think maybe on the next slide, you may see the elevations, uh, which... Yeah, which is, we should, we are not changing. The only thing we're doing on the elevation that's changing is we are providing, uh, handicap ramps to allow you to get into the, uh, into the front and side of the building. We're also going to be introducing a new, right now, the building does not have an elevator. We'll be providing an elevator that will, that will take you down to the ground floor and up to the third floor. So, so the place will be fully handicap accessible.
Thank you.
No, no, we didn't do anything.
All right, can you confirm, did this go through Article 80 process?
This is not Article 80, uh, uh...
Okay.
We, we were here originally and, uh, we were proposing 18 units, and one of the feedbacks we received was we reduced it down to below 15 units. And then, uh, the, the clients are eager to get going and they wanted to move the process along. So they, they, they took it, we reduced the number of units and also provide more program space into the building for the, for the residents.
Got it. Thank you. Any questions, board?
Uh, with the 14 units, what's going to be the price range of the rents?
Uh, I think that's something that's still being decided by my client in terms of what's, what's possible, but I think the intent is to have these be as affordable as possible. Uh, so I don't think they, they have, uh, I don't know if they hear, they, they, they may be able to speak to that, but I do believe that, uh, these will be affordable, uh, how the elderly units, but I don't think a price point has already been identified. So they may, they may, they may end up working with some CBA programs to, to, to lower the rent and things like that, but, uh...
Well, it's, it's subject to IDP, so it has to have sub... Can you speak to those units?
What do you mean by?
Inclusionary, it's, it's subject to the inclusionary development in this ordinance, so can you speak to that?
Well, I, I think our, our initial, initial, uh, goal was to maybe try and get through the ZBA process and then, and, and then develop the, the, the program further and, and, and get into those kind of details. We, to be honest with you, we have not done that quite yet. Uh, we, we do understand that we will have to meet those obligations.
Yeah, I think we typically hear what, that you understand the obligations and that you're committed to meeting the ordinance, so...
Yes.
You need to tell us how many units, IDP units, will be included in the project.
Hi, um, this is Ashley. I'm also part of the project. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so our goal is only to, um, provide the housing for low-income elderly, um, members of the community. So, um, every unit, um, will be for low income.
Okay, thank you.
Understood, but I, but to Ms. Panato's point, you, you do have to designate a, a minimum amount, uh, which in your case would be two, that are income restricted.
Okay.
Are you committed to that?
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Uh, is, is there any meal service, or these are really independent housing units? I mean, are there any community, you know, is there a meal facility here?
Um, there will be no meal facility there. These are really, um, independent housing units.
Okay, thank you.
Can you remind us a little bit more of who the client is, who, who is developing this, and what the experience is with developing affordable elderly housing? With, with a, with, with adult daycare?
So I'm, I, I think the owners may, the client may want to chime in, but I, uh, uh, as far as, uh, part of operating as adult daycare, my clients currently operate two of them, one in Boston and one in the city of Dedham. So they do have, they have a lot of experience dealing with, uh, with adult daycare and providing that service. They've had it, I think, for almost 10 years now. They've been operating two separate, uh, adult daycare that have been very successful. Uh, I would, and, uh, the, I, the housing piece is, is new, uh, and, and, uh, and, and that's where I come in to, to, to provide the support in terms of the design and things like that. But, uh, but certainly, this is a, these are clients are very, uh, well-versed in, in elderly needs, and, and they've been operating two adult daycares in the city in, uh, in Dedham for two years now, for almost 10 years now.
Okay, and then I have one follow-up, uh, question, Madam Chair, but just in terms of the, the site design...
Yes.
I mean, I think, you know, obviously, we're focused on it's forbidden elderly housing as a use in the conditional daycare, but as we look at the, the site plan here, and as you mentioned, it's going to be all, uh, affordable or income restricted, which would mean that you could alter the number of parking spaces possibly. Have you chosen to have the patio for the residents to be basically as far away from the building as possible? Uh, it just seems to run incongruent with a population that may have some limited mobility, and you have a lot of other open space options, so...
Yeah, I mean...
Curious to hear the comment, but I imagine if we take this forward, there needs to be further VPDA design review.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I agree. This will, this will, this will be going to the VPDA and we'll, 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 we'll get the different options. I mean, the one of the things, one of the things we were thinking is, is, is allowing the, the patio space to be a more quiet part of the, of the site, where the clients can actually, uh, enjoy, uh, some kind of a quiet time away from the, from the traffic. It's kind of a busy corner and also away from the parking coming in and out, so, uh, you know, uh, we are providing some parking space here because, as you know, we, uh, more than we need, but, uh, we will have that, uh, daycare, uh, downstairs, uh, that, you know, there will, there will be some employee parking needs. There will be some, um, visitor needs, so we're providing that. But the reason why we decided to put it, uh, at that end of the slide because, on top, and certainly we open to different, different interpretation, of different ways of looking at it. We're providing a kind of a respite for the clients, just a place that where they can go and just, and just sit down in a quiet and have a conversation and try to hustle and bustle.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held in a Butters meeting on September 1st, 2022, where it was lightly attended. Uh, the applicant went on to meet, uh, with, um, a Butters and secure, uh, a petition, uh, from 29 surrounding businesses in the area that expressed support for this proposal. Um, they took a deferral to decrease the size so as to not go through an Article 80 process. Um, they met with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, um, which expressed that they would like to see the applicant return back to the GMNC and present to the full board. Um, their recommendation is as follows. Recommendation from GMNC Board is to have the proponent present before the larger GMNC body. Proponent did not present any benefits to the immediate community. It was pointed out that the proposed tenants would be from existing users of the proponent's daycare sites. GMNC Board wants to ensure that a larger audience hears the proposal. Uh, the applicant said they'd be happy to propose, happy to meet with the, uh, with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, but expressed concerns that, um, if a vote was deferred, uh, today for their ZBA decision, this could dramatically impact, uh, the financial feasibility of the project. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob.
Yes. Yes, hi. Um, Bob D'Amico, BTD. Uh, Madam Chairlady and members of the board, um, I think this is a great project, but I'm just thinking of the convenience of those gaining access and egress to the parking area. And, um, there will be loading and unloading, uh, regardless of this not being a business. There will be times when deliveries will be made. And I would like to see, uh, an area where deliveries could park, because if there isn't, then there'll be blocking parking spaces. And finally, um, I would like to see the, uh, the, uh, what the, uh, footage is for the parking spaces, only because I just want to make sure there's ample convenience for anyone gaining access to the parking area and those, um, gaining access and egress. Um, just to make sure that it's, uh, going to be easy for, um, all the visitors to, uh, like I said, gain access and egress. So I'd like to see the, uh, the measurements of the parking, uh, spaces just to make sure, uh, that everything is okay. Uh, because when you think of who's going to be coming and going, I think it's, uh, very important that we, uh, know these dimensions. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can address that. Um, the, the, the parking spots themselves are, uh, 10 by 20, um, which is a little bit more than a 9 by 18 that you normally require. We have, uh, the aisles more than 20 feet wide. So certainly, uh, and, and all, before we go to ISD, we certainly will, 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 will make sure that all that is documented to construction document level. But also, you know, if you would be VPDA, if the, if the, if the board wanted to put this provision, because I do hear your concerns about being able to, uh, for delivery and, and that impact, uh, the, the parking area. So certainly, uh, could look at ways where, uh, maybe, uh, uh, because this is on a corner site, so there could be, there could be a way where we could create another entry on, uh, on, on the other street to, just for delivery that will not impact the current focus parking area. Probably take a little bit out of the green space, but certainly there, it's a big site, you know? We're not, we're not adding to the building, so the building is, uh, eh, 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 we'll keep it as a historic look. So, uh, uh, we have a lot of opportunity to create something, uh, as far, as far as the grounds are concerned, that would, that would certainly meet all these concerns.
Um, just a, uh, just a minor, uh, issue. If you, um, construct another curb cut, uh, that'll change, uh, the project from a traffic and parking, uh, perspective, um, you know, quite a bit.
Well, okay, so we're, we're certainly, I, I think one may, may, may already exist, but we certainly will, 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 will take a look at that. But, but like I said, uh, uh, there are, uh, eh, eh, even on Babson Street itself, there are two curb cuts on that street, and we will propose right now to block one, uh, to provide more green space. So certainly, leave one open to allow for, for the, for the curb, for the, uh, for the, uh, delivery issues that you, you're bringing up. But, you know, like I said, you know, there are so many opportunities on this site, actually. Uh, you know, we, we're proposing more parking than we need, so, uh, we wanted to defer the, the amount of green space as much as possible. So certainly, we, we, there are ways for us to address the concern you have while we go through the VPDA process.
Okay, well, thank you so much. It's a wonderful project.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure, uh, it works well for all those that'll be visiting, uh, this...
Absolutely.
And, uh, thank you so much for your concern.
Thank you, Bob.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Uh, this is Javier. Sorry, just a clarifying question.
Yes.
The number of units were reduced, is the parking number also reduced? I think I saw on the plane, they were eight.
No, the parking was not reduced. We reduced the number of units, and then we, we kept the parking the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, one follow-up question. Uh, while, while we understand, while I understand that it's under 15 units now, small project review has a 20,000 square foot threshold, and it looks like the drawing say you have 24,000 square feet of space. So I, I don't know if Jeff Hampton is still on or someone. I'm not quite sure I understand why at over 20,000 square feet, this isn't small project review, unless there's some other mitigating factor that results in that. So I, I, I'm just not clear on that piece.
Well, uh, I, I mean, I think the building, overall building itself, maybe 24, the, the, the program itself is a lot less than 20,000 square feet. You know, there's a lot of, you know, this is in, this is in old school. There's a lot of, uh, 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 areas that are, that will not be used. There are, uh, there will, there will be a lot of, uh, I mean, I don't think you can count the, uh, utility areas and things like that, uh, into the square foot total. So, uh, if you, if you were to add up the programs, I think we, I think we will, we will end up with somewhere around 18,000 square feet, 18 to 20,000 square feet.
And Jeff is in a meeting.
Yeah, I'm just, a little bit more would be helpful on the proponent's experience managing affordable senior housing and in whether there's going to be a management company involved. How's the management going to happen, uh, for this project?
I also want to hear that question.
Um, so we plan on having a management company manage the facility. So they will be the ones that will be managing the leasing, um, the maintenance, and the full operation of, of the building. While, uh, on the bottom end of the Adult Day Health Center, we will be managing it as we do the other two centers. Um, the other centers are for everyone else. Um, you'll see there's one on Truman Parkway and there's one on 60 Moston Street in Dedham. So we, we've got those...
Yeah, I understand, yeah, I understand the experience with adult daycare. And then, and you talked about 100% affordable. So have you applied for, for public funding to, you know, be able to provide units, affordable units?
We actually have, and, um, I did meet, um, with, um, with the company. And so they've asked for a couple of documentation, as well as some plans and, um, some spreadsheets that they asked us to fill out for them, so we're waiting to hear back.
So there's applications into the city, in the state for funding, or, or do you not know?
Um, the application is, is like for us to get funding, so yes, it is in the, it's with the city. Um, I can provide more details, feel like, after who we, who we spoke to.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Panato?
Sort of.
Kind of.
Sort of. It seems a little out of se... Ms. Panato, I think it feels a little out of sequence, and I feel like we're hearing also that it's going to be 100% income restricted, but that has to be captured somewhere, especially if it doesn't go through Article 80 Small Project. So that has to be captured here, too.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a little confusing. It's, it's typically, right. It would go through a city funding process and then go to ZBA, because it, it takes sometimes years to get that funding, um, and things change over time.
Correct.
This is completely, I mean, Thomas Tipton.
It, it just seems premature to be in front of us.
If I, if I, if I can, if I can, I'll do it.
Hello?
Are you asking for any funding for the project? Or are you asking us going to, um, market low-funding units for the, for the potential, uh, people, for the potential tenants? We, we, we sent out an application for funding on our own, um, but that's set up for this project. Our goal is to provide, um, low-income apartments, um, for the potential tenants. Uh, but we do plan on getting additional funding. We have funding of our own, so we plan on getting additional loans to fund this project. But the people who we want to cater to are low-income elderly, and that's who we want to be tenants there.
I, I, if I can just jump in, I, I, I think the burden, uh, is, is, is on the client to actually, I mean, meet their, the overall goal of the, the, uh, uh, 100% affordable housing. I mean, I don't buy, buy IPD, IPD requirement. They will, at the minimum, they, they will have to provide the two, the two units as affordable. So that's, that's a given, and I think, I think what the goal is, is to exceed that. And, and I think, uh, a lot of that, they're thinking, uh, their push right now is to, is to use their own funding if needed to actually make that happen. It's kind of a goal of turning this building into this community jewel for, for, for the neighbors. I think as far as we're concerned here right now, for this, for this board is, is, is trying to get, uh, get to the, uh, the... get to the long process of dealing with the PDA, and this could take a little while before we actually can go to ISD for permitting. So all this could be happening concurrently. But I think the burden on them to actually meet the, to achieve their goal of having the entire building be available to low-income tenants is on them. But the overall problem is.
Okay, okay, but that's only possible with significant public subsidies, right?
So I think the only thing we could say right now is we're looking at a project that is seeking relief for 14 independent elderly housing units plus adult day health. I don't think we can speak to the affordability other than their IDP requirements. So they can, they can say whatever they like about the other stuff, but what I see before us is 14 units with the minimum IDP units required, and that is what we should be considering.
Madam Chair, that's what I was struggling to say. Thank you.
That's right.
I will make a motion to approve subject to BPDA and BTD Design Review and with proviso that they seek to maximize compliance with IDP and affordability and that there be some BPDA attention to landscaping.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I just wanted to be on the record, too, that I'm not clear how Article 80 Small Project did not apply. But the provisos seem helpful in capturing that, so it's still a yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have three companion cases. First being BOA 1296092, the address of 23 Kellawor Street. Second is case BOA 1296093, the address of 27 to 29 Kellawor Street. And the third is case BOA 1296094, with the address being 49 Dudley Street. Are the applicant or representative present?
Mr. Neeler or Mr. Smith? Jessica, do you have, do you see either applicant?
Let me see.
Madam Chair, this is Javier. The applicants did notify us that they were going to request this call, but we notified them they had to show up for the.
Sorry, yes, it just blew up to something else because I'm like, Lisa, like.
Oh, okay, so they, so, all right, so what do you recommend? DW?
Yeah, they're not here. I would recommend a DW.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Deny without prejudice?
Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. All heard, ho.
So we will move on to case BOA 1332095, the address of 130 Marginal Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Noel De Carlo. And I also have Adam Glassman, the architect, who's here as well on the call. The proposal, which this rendering here shows the proposed building, is to erect a new residential, a four-unit building with three interior parking spaces to go along with that building on a vacant lot. This particular sub-district, zoning sub-district, is a 3F 2,000. And our lot size is over that. It's 2,813 square feet. If you go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. This shows the existing parcel. You can see the building to the left of ours is an apartment complex at four stories. Our building matched that with height and included parking on that ground level. If you see the two-family building, the yellow building that's pushed back, my client purchased that building as well and has agreed with the community to keep that building and then maintain and landscape the front, which we worked on with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association and our direct abutters. As you go a little further, you can see our first floor would house the main entry of the building. It would also house our bike room and a trash room and our parking area. The second floor on the project would house unit one and unit two. That's a 450-square-foot studio and a two-bedroom, 962 square feet. As we go up to the third floor, we have a three-bedroom unit at 1,355 square feet. And then on the fourth floor, a two-bedroom at 1,483 square feet. We worked with community outreach on this project for over a year, a year and a half. And in that process, we've made a number of changes to the project. One of them is removing our side decks and increasing our side yard and rear yard. Our rear yard is now 35 feet 1 inch. The recommendation, and that's what we followed from the PPA Board, was to recommend support with emphasis on reducing the decks and the rear yard. And that's what we did. So we now have 35 feet 1 inches from our setback to the building and 28 feet 7 inches from our rear porches. Those rear porches will also serve as a second means of egress from the building. We also sprinklered, have opposing a sprinkler system on those rear porches, as well as non-combustible material, in working with our rear abutters suggested that. We also have in place a landscape plant in the rear of this property, an extensive plan that we worked with the neighbors on in the rear of 130, but also in the front of 132. Just to go over the zoning violations, one minimum lot size required, we would be 1,000 square feet additional would be required. Our FAR, although in our changes, we brought it down from 1.74 to 1.69, what's allowable is 1.0, so we would still need an FAR variance. The height of the building is 36 feet. 35 is what's allowable under the code. We are at four stories, but we do have a four-story building to the left of us. Our side setbacks, which we increased, are now 2 foot 5 on the left, which meets the code, but then 2 feet on the right, so we'd be slightly under. Parking, just to go over, so the parking spaces are all interior. We have three. We originally had had four, but our rear abutters and side abutters asked us to push that building in further along with the BPDA's recommendation. So we did lose one spot, but it really helped with the functionality of the existing three spaces. This is an ideal location. It is still within short walking distance to Maverick T Station. It's right across the street from Paris Park. And with that, I can pause for any questions.
Mr. Drago, any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. May I take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for this proposal on June 7th of 2022. Some abutters expressed concerns regarding the lack of parking in the area, the height of the building and the rear decks. Other abutters complimented the aesthetics of the design and the developers' willingness to work with the community throughout the process. The applicant also met with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association in June, August, September, and October. The group voted to oppose the project with 18 residents voting against and seven in support. Those in opposition expressed concerns regarding parking. Our office received 40 letters of support, one of them coming from a direct abutter. And we also received 13 letters in opposition, two of those coming from residents from the City of Chelsea. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, any other elected officials office before we get to the.
The back.
See, Councilor Colletta's office. Are you looking to give testimony here?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Elaine Donovan with Councilor Colletta's office. Based on the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association's community opposition, the council would like to go on record as in opposition at this time. Thank you.
John? Okay, Minor?
Oh, anyway.
Can you state your name and address, please?
I am John Mythally. I live at 136 Marginal Street. I'm a direct abutter to this project. I would like to say that my wife and I are in support of this project. We feel that it fits the neighborhood well. The developer, some has worked with us in the neighborhood to make several changes with the project. And we, and they have made those changes. Also, if you may recall, years past, a larger project was proposed for this project, and the neighborhood thought it was inappropriate and the board didn't reject it. As I said, we think this project makes sense, it fits the area, and my wife and I are in complete support of the development on the lot of 130 Marginal Street.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, Peter Ryan, 85 Woodster Street. I just want to go on the record and say that I'm in support of this. More housing, less cars, less parking.
Thank you. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. I'm an apprentice with a carbon transition. We'd like to go on record and support this project.
Thank you. Stay connected. Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Let us know if you're in support or opposition. Okay, Adam Glassman, sending a request to unmute you.
I'm sorry, I was just trying to get let in as a presenter. I'm the architect for the project.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. Okay, Nicoletta? Okay.
Hi, yeah, I'm located at 2 Lambs and Court, Unit. Yep, Nicoletta Longo, 2 Lambs and Court, Unit 1. I'm in support. I appreciate that they're keeping the existing yellow house, and I really like the design and the fact that they listen to the neighbors.
Okay, thank you. And stay connected. Are you looking to give testimony here?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Teresa Drum, 80 Cottage Street, Unit 1. I really like the way the building looks comparable to what's on the street, and I love the fact that they're restoring a building that I believe was going to be a tear-down in the past. It's beautiful, and the fact that it's been vacant and that they're going to restore that building. And it sounds like they're only adding one part, one street parking space with now six units available in that beautiful neighborhood, so I am for it.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for approval with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
I can take one.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
We'll now move on to the 1:00 PM hearings. The first one being case BOA 1439675, the address of 2214R Strathford Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
We are, yes.
Can you introduce yourself and what your proposal, proposal is called?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Gab, personal and house protection design. I'm here with the owner, James L. Austin. We are proposing to raise the existing garage and then rebuild the new garage, which is slightly larger. Because it is an accessory building, there's a max height of 15 feet, and we are requesting 1510. And then also the side yard isn't sufficient, where we need to be at 3 feet, and we are at 1 feet. The existing garage is pretty much right on the property line, so we are offsetting that one foot to give a little bit more space on the right side. We are, the existing garage is 16 by 18 feet, and the proposed garage is 18 by 28. Like we said, we are pushing it back a little bit. The existing garage was built 100 years ago, so it is prone to some cracks in the slab, and it's just undersized and doesn't really fit the size, doesn't fit what modern car that we are looking to do. We did have a neighborhood meeting and civic meeting. We did get letters of support from the direct abutters left and right, and also the two direct abutters to the rear property and also to the property. I can take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Fairly straightforward. May I have public testimony? Jessica, is there any raised hands?
So I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
I can.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda, we have case BOA 1414548, with the address being 201 Forest Hill Street. Is the applicant or representative present? 201 Forest Hill Street?
Is there anyone from Chaney Management?
None. He doesn't have a hand raised.
Jessica, do you know if that's the applicant?
I'm sorry, do we have raised hands here? Let's start with Alice.
Yes, Carol Thompson, the president of Forest Hills Street, is on the screen, I hope, as is Dan Brainard, who is the architect for the project. I am the financial advisor to the Forest Hills Housing Cooperative.
Are you making the presentation?
I was hoping that Carol would do so. And Dan.
Yeah, if Carol's not here, I can get started.
Great. Can you identify yourself and your address, and please proceed?
I just made the panelists, so you'll have to unmute yourself again, David, Dan, and Alice.
Okay, first, is Carol present? No, okay, so I'll get started. First, we've had a few great neighborhood meetings, and we have the support of Jamaica Plain Neighborhood.
Can you walk us through the proposal itself? We'll hear from, we'll hear about the community piece.
Sure, yes. There is a site here with four buildings that have 87 units, currently having all their laundry, office, and community space in the footprint of one basement inaccessible apartment. So we've worked with our client to fix that situation and make all of the laundry, office, and community space accessible. The most efficient way we found to do this is to bring the community and office function up to at grade a new construction building. That drawing there you're looking at actually illustrates one reason why we need a new construction freestanding building. We looked at attached buildings, but that web of utilities really limits where we can effectively place a new addition without incurring great cost moving. without incurring great cost moving all sorts of utility lines. So this hearing is about the single-family new construction building specifically, although it is part of a larger conceptual design that has an improved community room, making it accessible, changing where the maintenance staff is located, bringing laundry up to grade in part of an existing building. And if you want to move on to the next slide. Okay. Yeah, that shows the three projects. The purple Community Services Building is the one that's relevant to this discussion here. But in any discussion we have about the other, other projects, I'm happy to talk about those. I believe we submitted a, like a PowerPoint presentation with some photos. Do you have that? No, we just have the slides here from the plans that were submitted. Okay. We'll work with that. So that is the current state of the elevations of the exterior of this new construction building. As you see, it's one story. There's an entry area with a reception and then there's also a little office space, a little workspace, bathroom, two offices for the community manager and the residential services coordinator. And there's a conference room for private meetings with clients. I'm not sure if you know, but this is an affordable housing development. So people will come in and discuss their finances and other personal, personal situations. Like Alice is the financial consultant on the project, so I'm not fully aware of those programs. She can describe them if needed. You'll see there's, we're looking at this as a pretty simple form. We have, we have metal roofing and vertical siding on one section and we're differentiating the lower section. Initially, we had shown a stone veneer. We may change that to a horizontal cladding. The glazed side opens up to the landscape and the... The other sides are, face, the back sides face the building. They don't really have a public face. The other packet that I thought we were viewing does show a 3D view of the project. You can't see this building from neighboring or rear of Butters and from most of Forest Hill Street. You can see the building, the top of it anyway, from one part of an open parking area on site. So we think it has minimal visual impact, but it greatly improves the daily lives of staff and residents at the project. So I'm not looking at the same drawing set as you. I'm not sure if there's any more relevant drawing to look at, but I'm happy to discuss them or answer any questions if anyone has one this time.
It does look like your colleague Carol is on. If you, if you wanted to add anything?
Yes. I have been trying to get on since the beginning. I am Carol Thompson. I am president of Forest Hills Housing Cooperative and 87-year-old in affordable housing development owned by its residents since 1983. We are here today to ask you for zoning reference so that we can build a community service center for our residents. The 1960s-era design of our development did not consider the needs of the disabled or that, for that matter, parents with children in strollers. Every apartment and community space is at least a half a flight of stairs from the entrance to our building. The new community service center will be a story, but one-story building in the courtyard between our four buildings. That will be accountable to all residents. It will also create confidential spaces where residents can meet with staff. The community service center will not be visible to our immediate neighbors. It will be particularly visible from Forest Hill Street. As you will see within our architect's presence, the design. We do not believe it will have an impact on our neighbors, but we will have a beneficial impact for the 87 households at the cooperative. We hope you will grant our request for a variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. May I, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board to back our information on the community process. Our office facilitated a Butters meeting on January 23rd, 2023. The applicant then went on to meet with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council Zoning Committee, which approved this proposal on March 1st. No opposition was heard throughout the community process. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Leader Michael Flaherty, Council to record support.
Thank you. Okay. Alex, are you looking to give testimony here? I think she's part of the development team. Okay, so we have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Thank you. Any, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second? Sorry, was there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck with this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1440171, with the address of 31 Winchester Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I present the homeowners Manuel and Pauline De Frain of this single-family home in Bay Village. This is a very minimal request for relief with respect to a small expansion of an existing deck at the rear of the building on the third level. I'll explain the condition of the rear yard here on the screen on the site plan. If you could enlarge that a little bit more. Great. So you see number 31 is an existing four-story brick building, number 33 next door, and then number 40, 42 Piedmont Street in the back, all share this little common courtyard light well in the back of the buildings. And they've been doing a whole bunch of projects back there, fixing their masonry walls, sharing scaffolding and things of that nature. My clients are expanding by 32 square feet their existing walkout terrace on the third floor in the back by removing an old metal staircase that used to be a fire escape, but is no longer needed because they've turned this into a single-family residence. So by removing the metal staircase, they sort of have an opening next to the deck that despite squaring it off by 32 square feet, they're able to make the deck a little bit bigger at that level. The sole violation with respect to that is Article 6, Section 8 of Bay Village, which is cited for rear yard insufficiency. But that section also provides that we need a conditional use permit because this constitutes a balcony above the first story. So to the extent that it is a violation for the rear yard insufficiency and the conditional use permit for a deck above the first story, we request both. Next slide, please. Again, these are just existing floor plans of the existing house, which used to be multiple units and has now been turned into a single-family residence over the years by my clients. Next slide. And let's see. There is a request for some structural drawings from a structural engineer by ISD, so we've provided those. Next slide. Just zoom into the proposed deck expansion. Okay. If you could enlarge this one. On the lower left-hand corner, you can see the new deck is about four feet and some inches. By eight feet, the little dotted line shows the area of the expansion. To the right of the dotted line is the existing deck and there's a walkout set of double doors from the dining area at that level. And that's the, that's the extent of our request.
Thank you, Mr. Lacass. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. May I have public testimony?
Hi, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Kim Crucially from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board on this matter. Our office held in a Butters meeting in March of 2022. Were any concerns brought up by Butters were addressed by the applicant? Thank you.
No raised hand at the moment.
Good afternoon, Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The counselor would like to go on record in support with two good community process and no outstanding issues reported by neighbors or the civic association. Thank you.
Thank you. No raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1366165, with the address being 1-Hoggin Place. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is Eric Zacherson, architect for the project. We've been asked by IS, or by the zoning board, Stephanie Haynes, to ask for a deferral as during the re-review, there an additional violation was cited and they need to re-notice the project. We're ready to go forward, so we'd like it as soon as possible, but it just needs to be re-noticed.
Thank you. Javier, what's the next available date?
Yes, Madam Chair. June 27th would be the next available.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. We'll see you in June.
Next, we have case BOA 1433817, with the address being 147 to 163 Orleans Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, good afternoon. Julia Makayeva Legal Counsel with the applicant East Boston Neighborhood Health Center. I am joined here by attorney Kathleen Brill of Foley Helwig and our architect representative Danielle Buckley of East Januity. So thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board for having us today. Our project aims to expand physical access to the health center's geriatric program for frail seniors in the community. We propose to renovate our inner street of building on Orleans Street by adding clinical exam rooms so we could operate a senior care center. I'll briefly share an overview of the health center and the goal for our project today and then our attorney and architect will go over the specific pertinent to the relief we are requesting. So as many of you know, the health center has been in the community for over 50 years. We are the largest community health center in Massachusetts governed by patient board. We provide care to more than 120,000 patients a year, including a large population that is uninsured. Please, next slide. The project represented today is part of our East Boston campus where we have several clinical buildings and program sites. We are actually serving about 60% of all East Boston residents and about half of our 1,500 staff are from the service area. Next slide, please. So by adding clinical services at the currently administrative building, we would be able to operate our program of all-inclusive care for the elderly or PACE, for short, that helps frail seniors in their homes in the community instead of nursing homes by providing comprehensive medical, social and recreational services. We've operated this program since 1990s and currently manage it from six locations in East Boston and surrounding communities and manage three care, senior care centers similar to what we're proposing here. Next slide, please. So the location is 147163 Orleans Street. It's just a short walk from Maverick T Station. Next slide again. Thank you. Here you can see perspective along Orleans and Gulf Streets. So the building consists of two connected buildings, one single story on the right and the other is two-story. And the building is located right across from the health center's employee parking, right, right across Orleans Street. And then, next slide, please. And here is just a close-up image of the current front building, front of the building showing the connection point. And I'll now turn over to Kathleen to provide detail on the uses, on the current uses and relief we are requesting. And you can please turn to next slide.
Good afternoon. Just briefly, the zoning relief that we are here for is for a use variance to allow clinical healthcare uses. So the existing uses at the site include office and administrative use. Those are presently authorized and would remain. The primary additional use is adult daycare, which is non-hod use in the district. But healthcare clinical uses are forbidden and that is the reason we are here to seek a variance for that. None, no dimensional relief is required for the project. It consists primarily of interior renovations with a small exterior vestibule that's going to be added, but no other dimensional relief or any other use relief is required under the code. And I will turn it over to Danielle to go over the design.
Hi, if you could go to the next slide, please. From Danielle Buckley, Principal of East Januity and the Architect for the Project. This is a high-level sketch of the interior of the project. The PACE program for the elderly consists of three major components, which we're highlighting here. In the bottom left, you will see the clinic portion of that and that allows the elderly patients to come and be seen by healthcare providers while on-site. There's also a day program that allows them for specialization, meals and other sort of personal care help, as well as the physical therapy, which you can see in the, in the top left. And so as Kathleen mentioned, the real issue at the basis of the clinic program in the bottom left, which is a small component, but integral to the services that need to be provided. There is a new vestibule that we are proposing in the top right and that is sort of a minimal size, 80 square feet, just to allow for some mediation between indoor and outdoor for the patient. And the two buildings are currently connected. As you can see on the left, there's a small connection there. We do not intend for any other connection point at this time. The connection will remain and that will be utilized to allow for passage between the two buildings.
Sorry, can you orient us to, can you orient us as to where Orleans Street is, please?
So it's on the bottom of the page.
Thank you.
I think we can go to the next slide. These are some examples of the other programs that East Boston has and what the interior would look like. Let's go to the next slide. I think that's it, actually. I don't know if Kathleen has anything else.
Thanks, Danielle. That's it. We can, we can take any questions. Thank you.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Couple of questions. So is the, is the drop-off and loading area then within the existing parking lot?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'm pretty familiar with the...
I'm pretty familiar with the area and the location. Is there, are there any improvements planned at all for the exterior of the building?
Other than as Stubble mentioned, no.
Okay, all right. Well, being urged, it's a bit drab-looking. And I would like to, I think, roll up to one of the earlier slides there and just make an encouragement of the health center to consider any kind of street trees. If you'll see one of the images earlier on, I noticed this one going through your presentation, that you can see that the entire area there is pretty well covered with street trees, except for the whole block, basically, of around the health center. So just encourage, since you're trying to do things to help encourage better health for people, that East Boston has pretty low tree canopy. So, thank you.
Mr. D'Amico, are you commenting on this project?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. My only question is, has to do with persons with disability parking. Unless I missed it, I didn't see any spaces to accommodate this important need. And by the way, I was a former board member of the East Boston Health Center, so I'm quite familiar with the organization, and it does tremendous amount of good for the East Boston and the surrounding communities. But I would just worry about the persons with disabilities parking.
Thank you for the question, Danielle. I can answer with your help. So based on the PACE program model, so most patients will arrive and depart by the health center's van transportation, and will have a side drop-off area, as Danielle described, for those purposes. But we will also reconfigure any, the drop-off area with the ADA compliance in mind. And Danielle, please edit if there's anything.
No, I think you've covered it. So part of adding the vestibules to allow for the drop-off for patients, and in doing that, you know, additional ADA spaces required will be provided.
Yes, I'm gonna look at two spaces for persons with disability parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board to back our information on the community process. The applicant met with the Gulf Street Citizens Association in February and March of this year. The group voted to support the project unanimously. They stated they were happy with the changes the East Boston Neighborhood Health Center is proposing, which will provide better care for senior citizens, and also stated the building will be a community asset if approved. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other raised hands?
Elaine Donovan, are you looking to give testimony here? Bob?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Councilor Coletta, based on community support from the Gulf Street Citizens Association and the impact it would have on the community, would like to go on record in strong support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Leader Michael Flaherty, Council to go record and support.
Thank you. No additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA and BTD design review.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
And next and last on the list, we have case BOA 1448501, the address being 69 Saratoga Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, I am, Madam Secretary, members of the board. So good evening, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small of a business adjust of 51 Dobson Road in Burntree, Mass. Today, we're here seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a one-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. The zoning sub-district here is a 2F 2000. Our lot size is approximately 2,500 square feet. The zoning violations are as follows. Three-family uses are forbidden use in the 2F zoning sub-district. The FAR requirement is 0.8. We are proposing 1.1. Side yard violation is two and a half feet. We are at two and a half feet, and we are, we think we were cited for that erroneously. And rear yard setback is requirement is 30. It's 30 feet, and we have 20. And again, those violations are pre-existing non-conforming. What it is, is it's going to be a rehab of the building, interior and exterior. Unit 1 will consist of a one-bedroom unit with approximately 2,000 square feet. Unit 2 will be 1,100 square feet, two bedrooms, one bath. And unit 3 on the third floor will be one bedroom, one bath at approximately 630 square feet. I'll pause there and entertain any questions that the board might have. Just really quick, as a side note too, Madam Chair, we are currently being taxed as a three-family through the City of Boston's Assessment Department.
Got it. And to confirm, there is no basement living?
There's basement living, but no bedrooms in the basement.
This from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Can you just speak to the basement? I see.
Yes, I think we can go up to the, I think the basement floor plan is up. Yes.
And it's also on a coastal flood resilient district? So, and you've got living in the basement, basement occupancy?
Yes, Madam Chair. We are proposing a playroom for the family in the basement. No bedrooms again. And again, we do have our G-Card no harm letter, and we did receive G-Card letter of support from Groundwater Trust.
And can you talk about the ceiling heights in that basement area?
Yeah, ceiling heights for the basement area are 7 foot 6.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board to back our information on the community process. It looks like a Butters meeting was held back in 2021 with ONS. The applicant met with the Eagle Hill Civic Association in January and February of 2022. The group voted to oppose with 11 residents against and three in support. Members voiced being displeased with the proposed hardy plank siding, as they stated this would destroy Victorian characteristics of the home. With that, we'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Seminale, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Elaine?
Madam Chair, members of the board, based on community opposition from the Eagle Hill Civic Association, Councilor Coletta would like to go on record in opposition. Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that?
Sure.
Sure. When we met with Eagle Hill, their primary concern was with regard to the exterior of the building. We had suggested that, you know, the BPDA would not, in design review, would not allow for any aluminum siding. It would probably do nothing less than hardy plank on the side. I think members of the Eagle Hill Civic Association weren't satisfied with the comment that, you know, BPDA would have design review over the project. And then, you know, with regard to hardy plank. But we expressed to them that we're willing to do whatever the BPDA suggested in design review with regard to the exterior. And with regard to support, I think we, the applicants went around and got a number of support letters that are in, should be in the file for this application. I don't know if Mr. Stenbridge has those handy.
We do have letters of support.
Yes.
Yes.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the following provisions, that there be no building code relief, no building code relief be granted, no living space allowed in the basement, given that it's in a coastal flood resilience of the district, and BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, and thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Thank you. And that's a wrap. Thank you.
Have a good day, folks.
Thank you.